Evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray.
Here.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Mansfield.
Here.
Ortega.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Vlad.
Here.
Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for an invocation which will be offered by Tony Cycle representing Pocatello Senga.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could bring our attention to our breath and body and where we are right at this present moment, grounding ourselves in this present moment, we give thanks for this precious body and this precious life that we've been given, and we reaffirm our desire to serve our fellow beings. May we all open our hearts to the needs of others, to give shelter to the homeless, to provide safe refuge for those in danger. May we all live with ease of being. May all those suffering in war and oppression find peace. May those grieving find solace, and those who are ill find compassionate treatment and health. May all beings without exception be free from enmity, danger, hatred, and despair. May all beings be free from suffering and from the causes of suffering, and may our efforts here today give benefit to all beings. May it be so. Mayor Vlad, members of council, thank you for your continued service to the people of Pocatello.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: clarification and regular council meeting of April 7, 2022, and special city council meeting of March 10, 2022, and May 19, 2022. B, material claims. Council may wish to consider material claims for the period of May 14, 2022 through May 31, 2022. C, animal shelter advisory board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Joan Reed to serve as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, replacing Brandy Jacobia, who resigned, term to begin June 3, 2022, and expired June 3, 2024. D, library board of trustees appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Sarah Godse to serve as a member of the Library Board of Trustees, replacing Chuck Orr, who resigned, term to begin June 17, 2022, and expired July 1, 2024.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I request that item B, material claims, be pulled out of the consent agenda to be considered separately, and I further make a motion that that item be moved to the end of the agenda so that our discussion does not impede progress relative to members of the public and does not keep staff here unnecessarily late.
So what is your motion? Your motion is to move B to the end of the agenda?
Yes. My request is to pull B out of the consent agenda.
Okay.
And my motion is to move item B to the end of the agenda so that we do not impede progress and keep the public or staff here unduly late with our questions.
So your motion really truly has nothing to do with approving the consent agenda minus B. It's just to move B to the end of the...
Yes, my request is to remove item B.
I understand what your request is.
And my motion is to move the discussion and consideration.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to move B to the end of, agenda B to the end of the meeting opposed to after the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
And we have, do we have a second? Just a minute. We have a second by Ortega. Okay, yes.
My one concern is that if our goal is to ask questions of staff concerning the spending of the material claims, wouldn't this require all staff to stay to answer our questions of material claims until the very end of the meeting as opposed to leave when their agenda item is finished?
Sure, it would.
Not, not...
But we have a...
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Not necessarily, because a question can be asked, and if no one able to answer that question is present, it can be answered tomorrow. So I, and I believe it's in the best interest of the public and the majority of staff to move this item so that we do not impede the city's business unduly.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to move B to the end of the agenda opposed to where we typically put it. Motion was by...
Stevens.
Stevens, and seconded by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lorick?
No, I'm fine with pulling it out, but not with moving it to the end.
Mansfield?
No.
Vlad?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve consent agenda subsections A, C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lorick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lorick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. We have a material claims agenda item B in front of us, council.
I'd like to know on page 10 of this report, we wrote paid Idaho Bond Bank authority, $7,500 for FY '20 audit failure to file. I'd like to know what Fund 60 is and why, if the audit was done before Jim Kruger left, why hasn't it been filed?
Fund 60, I've not seen anyone from finance over there, so I'll have to get you an answer on what Fund 60 is, but I can answer the second part of your question. The second part of the question is that report is due on June 1, and it was not complete until December, just before Jim moved, and they gave us an extension through the end of July, and so the end of July is when we started receiving that bill.
And so we've been getting this bill since July?
No, because after we got the thing to them, they stopped sending that bill.
Okay, so I need to know what Fund 60 is.
I will get an answer for you and have him email that to you tomorrow.
Perfect.
Counselor?
Yes.
Cheatham, do you by any chance have your fund?
I don't see that Fund 60 is on here. It's not, so I can't help it.
I'll find out, and I'll get it sent to the council. Any other questions?
I would just point out that I have a question pending because we haven't noticed it before, I haven't noticed it, but we've been having a redundancy between August and September of '21. The chances of us spending to the penny two consecutive months is probably higher than winning the lottery, and so I've asked finance to kind of clarify that because it just seems like our spending two consecutive months being to the penny is pretty remote, and I need to answer for that, and I think that is something we should all want to have an answer because we're approving something that the odds are pretty high that it's an error.
So, and I can speak to that a little bit for the finance department. They did mention that they're looking at it. They believe that...
Fund 60.
Fund 60 is Enterprise Debt Service Fund. Is Fund 60?
So...
Enterprise Debt Service.
So Matt, is it legal to pay a fine out of enterprise fees?
I don't have an answer for you on that one right now. I can look into that.
Okay, thank you.
The, the idea is, at least preliminary, what the finance department's looked at for your question, Roger, is eight months ago when that happened, Jim just rolled September or August's number over into September and didn't give the report.
Okay.
And so that's, that's what they're thinking, but they're working backwards to it, so they will be getting an answer for that.
And it just defies kind of the logic because I think our P-card activity was $250,000 difference between one month and the next month, so that would say to me, suggest to me that spending was higher in one month than the other month. So I appreciate the finance department working to find an answer.
Yeah, they're, they're looking at it, but they, that's, that was their initial thing as they looked at it. September, they closed September down in the middle of September, so the P-card would have been activated or used more toward the end of September, but then the actual dollar amount, they believe that Jim just moved August, he didn't do the report that was, we expected then, so, but there, like I say, that was eight months back, and so they're working their way back to it.
We've just been approving it over and over, and I thought, so, doesn't make sense.
Other questions?
I have...
Oh, other thing I should mention is that the, I think we need to be focusing on using P-cards, and I, I don't know if the back of the sheet where it goes from P-card activity to purchase agents had monthly totals. We understand, we came to understand in our budget hearings last year that using a P-card gets us a credit or rebate, if you will, to our, our account of 1.5, 1.4%. I don't know what the interest rate is going up, it might be greater, but that has a potential to earn us hundreds of thousands of dollars if we learned how to use the P-card with a greater accountability and a greater understanding of what it accomplishes. I did some calculations. If we just went up by 33% use on last year, I think we would have seen our total jump by several hundred thousand dollars, and I just think it warrants us to find ways to not spend money by getting credits back to us.
I, and I guess I have a P-card question because I believe that there was a reimbursement expenditure of a bit more than $17,000, which appeared at least to a particular individual, and that makes, certainly makes it seem as though that individual paid by personal cash, personal check, or personal credit card, and, and I'm wondering why, why we would do that when we have P-cards, because again, we lose out on, on this 1.4%, and 1.4% of $17,000 isn't going to break the bank, but you know, 200 and whatever dollars is 200 and whatever dollars, so can, and I think that was a police department, as I recall, reimbursement, and I'm wondering what...
It wasn't, it wasn't... I, the chief answered my questions via email. I emailed him about that. Those were, Don Rogers is their quartermaster.
Oh, okay.
Purchases, but those purchases were all paid by check, and, and he sent me all the invoices that I could look at, and I can share them with you.
Why would we pay, so by his personal check?
No.
By police, by city check?
City, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the material claims, consent agenda subsection B.
Second.
We have a motion by Mansfield and a second by Lorick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lorick? Yes.
Bray?
I can't until I get some answers, so no.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
No.
Stevens?
No, for all the reasons I've stated before, I'm just not comfortable with our, you know, with our lack of a CFO and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so no.
Okay, yes, yes. All right, thank you. We'll move to agenda item four is a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. June 6, 7, 8, and 9, starting at 9:00 AM, will be a city council budget meetings. June 16, city council liaison work session clarification meeting at 2:00 PM, clarification meeting at 5:30 PM, regular council meeting at 6:00 PM. Other events, June 4 through 11, high school rodeo finals at Bannock County Event Center. June 11 at 8:00 AM, Parks and Recreation, June Joy in the Journey Jog Fun Run. Contact the Parks and Recreation for more information. June 4 at 6:00 PM, Gate City Grays home opening, home game season opener. June 19, Father's Day at the Zoo. Fathers will receive a 50% discount off their admission when they're accompanied by a paid child. June 8, from 4 to 6, this is an important one, you might run it right down if you drive up I-15 northbound, or if you drive anywhere around the city of Pocatello on, on the interstate. June 8, 4 to 6:30 PM, ITD will hold an open house on the project for widening, widening the I-15 corridor. So we're going to have a lot of construction over the next, I don't know, 100 years probably, but they say two or three. It will be held at the Shoshone-Bannock Hotel at the Chief Taggy Room at the Shoshone-Bannock Hotel, so you might be interested in that. City offices will be closed Monday, June 20th in observation of Juneteenth holiday. Garbage and recycle services will operate as scheduled. Ross Park Band Concerts on Sunday evenings from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. They begin June 26th and continues through the month of July.
What time is that?
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item five, taxicab license denial appeal. Stephanie Schroder. Stephanie Schroder will be present to appeal the denial of the city of Pocatello taxicab license application, which was denied by police department. Stephanie? Good. So what we need to, is, we need you to explain to us why we would overturn the police department's decision on this.
So I know why I got denied. It was due to my criminal background. I know I've made my mistakes in the past. Over the past few years that I've been, you know, on probation and this, the other thing. I've been doing really good. I got a recommendation letter from my probation officer. He feels I'm a great part of this community, and I have the letter with me as well.
You have the letter?
Yes.
Can I see it?
Can we, yeah, can you bring that up to me here, and we'll pass it along?
Along with that letter is the list of my drug testing that I've done. That's all came out negative.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for Stephanie while she's here?
When was the start of your probation date and when is the estimated end? Roughly?
It was mid of 2016-ish.
Okay. And when are you estimated to be off probation?
The end of this year to mid of next year.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, I'm seeing none, but don't go very far. I just sit down there, they may have some questions. We'll have our police department come and explain to us some things, and then we'll go from there, and we'll get you your letter back.
Since you're still standing there, Stephanie, what is Rides.Rus?
Rides.Rus is a taxi company, taxi company that I really like to work for.
But it says you have been working for them.
Yes, and then we learned that we needed a city license per driver. Mine got denied, so I stopped driving.
So what are you doing now?
Whole lot of nothing, just odd and jobs right now, just trying to make ends meet.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi.
Do you have questions for me?
Questions?
Could you just give us a summary of why you, the police department would deny?
Like she said, due to her background, she has a felony charge and several misdemeanor charges. She's on, it shows on her probation is, it ends June of next year.
Could you explain those charges further?
Yep, so the first charge, the felony is, it was reduced to loot and, or it was a loot conduct with a child under 16, which was reduced to injury to her child. There was, and that was a felony charge. She was charged in 2017 with a misdemeanor charge of drug paraphernalia possession with intent to use. In 2016, she was charged with resisting and obstructing officers. That was also a misdemeanor charge. And in 2012, she was found guilty of driving inattentive or careless, and that was also a misdemeanor charge. And the disqualifications for a license per city code is, they have to have criminal free record from conviction for any felony or any crimes involving moral perpetuity or violence, possession or sales of any controlled substance. So that was the reason for my denial.
Any other, any other questions? Yeah.
I think I can probably make assumptions, but moral perpetuity, can you just define that, what that would be looked at legally?
I am thinking anything...
Great. Okay, okay.
I'm not sure exactly what it means.
That's okay.
Like moral...
Oh, yeah.
I'd absolutely give you a few examples, just because I figured that question would come up. Anything from kidnapping and voluntary manslaughter to forgery, embezzlement, DUIs, adultery, which is still on the books, homicide, drunk, yeah, DUI already said, so it runs the gamut.
It's a long, it's a long list.
Quite the list.
So, and also, when I called her to deny her license, she was, I called Rides.Rus, and she answered. She was working for them at the time, so she hadn't even, she didn't have her license.
Was she driving for them?
Yes.
Or was she just answering phones?
She was driving for them.
And when was, when was that call? Mr. Mayor?
It was when I called to deny her license. It was like two to three weeks after she applied.
After she applied, Linda?
I would, just like some clarification, so the felony charge, I believe you said happened in 2017.
Yes, that's what, the date of arrest was...
Okay, and, and she is supposed to be off probation for that next year, mid next year?
June 26th of 2023.
But our code, if I'm understanding correctly, we require being 10 years past the charge, so...
No, there was no, there's no...
Not on that one?
Yeah, no, and...
Okay.
That's just her probation. She's off of probation, but she still has a felony charge. So the code reads she has to be free of any felony convictions, and so that the felony, she'll still have a felony charge after the probation.
That, that's my question. I'm, being off probation next year doesn't, it still doesn't fall within the 10 years. That's what I'm asking.
Right.
There isn't 10 years on that one?
That's a childcare license thing.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's no timeframe. Okay.
Okay, all right, so yeah.
I have a question for Stephanie.
Okay. Any other questions?
Stephanie, were you driving without a license when you knew you needed a license?
When I learned that I needed a license, I did stop driving during that time period.
But when she called you to tell you that you couldn't get a license?
She called me on my personal cell phone. I did not answer the cab phone that day.
So I called Rides.Rus to actually talk to the owner that day, and she answered.
I did not answer that phone that morning.
Well...
I answered my personal cell phone.
Okay, hold on, hold on.
I called Rides.Rus to talk to the owner, and I asked him who answered the phone, and he said Stephanie did. And so I asked, is she driving for you? And he said, yes. I thought because she came and applied, and I said, no. Well, then later that day, he had eight drivers come in that were driving for him without a license that applied for a license update.
Okay, okay. I want to make sure I get that back to you before I forget. Any other questions for Stephanie?
I, I'm just wondering if the owner of the company is by any remote chance present?
Yes, he is.
Are we allowed to?
You can ask, yeah, sure.
How is it that you didn't, I'm confused as to how you didn't know that your drivers needed to have licenses?
Well, that's the thing, is the city code did state that, the city code also requires that each one of my drivers only carries state minimum liability insurance, and so we were in the process right before the licensing lady called us, two days before that, we had a big company meeting with Butler Insurance lady to come down and have a big meeting with us about the insurance, because there's a liability that anybody else would have on their normal vehicle would not cover if there was an accident, because as a standard, regular insurance on a vehicle doesn't cover for transportation. So I told all my guys that we needed to meet with our insurance people to get the correct insurance before we came in and got all the licensing dealt with.
So how long have you been in business?
Technically, I bought the business six months ago from a gentleman that started it.
Okay.
And the gentleman that started it, we didn't know anything. He's informed me that we only had to have one license for the actual business.
Okay.
So since then, I, we have gotten all the drivers to come in, we have created an insurance program with Butler Insurance to cover everybody, so there is not...
Okay.
...an actual issue, and I talked with licensing about that, I talked with financial about it, I mean, not financial, legal, about what to do. I even consulted my own attorney, and that's where we are going with it.
Gotcha.
So we have come with that part. Now, I know that Stephanie, as far as talking with her probation officer, as soon as she is off probation, she is granted a withheld judgment, which will reduce her felony down because she has done everything that she has been asked to do and has not violated. Just for thought.
So can somebody clarify for me? I think, I mean, I don't, I don't know who's the most, you know, who knows what's going on here, but it appears to me that in fact Stephanie will not have a felony on her record. She will have a withheld judgment once she finishes her probation.
Correct. Now, I'm not sure if that letter states it or not, but her probation...
I don't believe that was stated.
Okay, her probation officer, when Stephanie got in trouble, she was living in Blackfoot, and she was not, did not have access to the treatment that they were asking her to do. Since her moving to Pocatello and being here, she has gone through the treatment. Her probation officer said that he would let her off early, but she has not completed the treatment, so right now she is going through the treatment to try to get that done as fast as she can. My attorney, Craig Parrish, the moment that she finishes her treatment, he's going to file for her to get off early.
Okay, looks as though, is there, has shed some light on...
So, council member, it does appear that a withheld judgment was granted, and if she doesn't violate any of the terms and conditions of probation while in probation, the essential effect of that will be...
Right.
She does not have a felony on her record.
And she's been on probation for four and a half years.
Okay.
And has not violated anything. I have had a good communication with her probation officer over everything.
So can you clarify, because I'm confused, we seem to have two stories about who answered the phone and, and who was driving and not driving, and, and since you're the person who apparently indicated that Stephanie answered the phone and Stephanie was driving when Stephanie says she wasn't, could you help me understand?
That particular day, I worked until 3:00 AM that morning, and then I got a phone call from Ms. Tori, I think it was like at 9:30, woke up out of dead sleep. I honestly don't remember who was actually driving at that moment.
So were you on the premises of the business and...
No, I was at home.
So how would you know who answered the phone?
I don't know. I don't know. That's why I just said I don't know exactly who answered the phone.
Sure. I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to.
I don't remember.
Connect the dots here.
Hold on now, just a second now. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I had talked to you earlier that month and told you that anybody that was driving for you had to be licensed. And then I, I have a documented, like, the beginning of March, that I talked to, I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Kimball.
Kimball, about that he, anyone that was driving for him had to be licensed. They had to go through the whole process, the background check, everything. And then, this was because he, there was another driver that was operating for him that was not licensed. And we found out about that through a police report. That's when I notified him. And then she was driving for him after I had talked to him. This was like, three weeks after. It was not even a month later.
Was she driving after you notified her?
She, so when I, so in Spillman, I called the phone number for RISRS that was listed, and she answered. So then I called his cell phone, and he told me that she was, she was answering the phone to take rights for RISRS, but she did not know it was me that was calling.
Right, but answering the phone isn't, I mean, you don't have to have a taxi license to answer a phone for a taxi company.
No, but she, he told me that she was driving.
I don't remember who was running that particular day.
It seems to me there are two questions here. One, one is the whole business side of it, and one is Stephanie. And, and so I, I have faith in our law enforcement professionals. And the fact that her probation officer says, please reconsider, and the fact that there is a withheld judgment has been granted pending successful completion. I'd like to separate the business from Stephanie, and I move that we.
Before you make a motion, I know we've got two other questions down here that have been trying to get in there. Well, once that motion and that discussion becomes us, not them anymore. And so Chris is going to make the motion, but, that she would like, but Linda had a question. She's been trying to get in for five minutes, and then Josh has a question as well. Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to ask if it's a possibility, since you're going to be off probation next year, you know, so we're talking a year, maybe a little less than a year, is there another role that you could play, like answering the phones or being sort of the dispatch person that does not require a license? I'm, I'm very concerned about the felony charge, and, and I like to follow the recommendations of our staff and follow our codes, unless there's a really strong reason not to. That's just sort of the way that I like to approach this. So I'm wondering, is there something else? I mean, I don't want you to not be able to live, you know, you need to have some kind of a job, but is there something that you could do for your company that would not require a license?
For the actual cab company, no. Because the way that we have our rates set up is the person that is dispatching is usually the main driver, and they get the calls in. And when they start getting too many, then they bring on the other people. So.
There's not a separate function of dispatch or something like that?
So what I have done is I own some other businesses, and we've brought her on to help do other things that way, so she can at least cover and try to make ends meet with her two kids.
Okay. Josh?
My question's for staff.
Oh, for staff?
Yeah. Do you want her to come?
Please come on back up.
Sorry.
Do we have any more questions for Stephanie?
She needs to stay there.
Okay.
Just move over.
Just scoot over, and there we go.
Just stay right there.
Is this the withheld judgment, injury to child, is this the only felony? My understanding is that there's a second felony as well.
That was the only felony.
This is the only felony. The others were misdemeanors. Okay, that's the clarification I need. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Chris?
I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of Stephanie's probation officer, and we grant her, her taxi driving license. Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the rule?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to agenda item six, public hearing, proposed fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding proposed fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, you've had this, budget amendments in front of you. If you have any questions for it, I have a list of what these are, of where they are and what, what it is here. I guess that I'm acting as applicant with that. This is the case. And so I do have that if you have any questions, counsel. Okay, hearing none. Then, as far as I know, there has been no correspondence, other than what we have, what, what has been here, there's been no correspondence in, I believe, in the finance department. Madam Clerk, have we had any in the clerk's office? Okay? So with that, then I would open it up for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, then I declare the public hearing closed. We get, we're disclosing that one. It will be back in front of us.
Sorry.
In a minute. Well, not in a minute, in a couple of weeks. Agenda item seven is also a public hearing. Public hearing, zoning ordinance text amendment. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Dakota Worrell, represented by Crystal Chanda of A&amp;E Engineering, for a zoning ordinance text amendment to amend table 17.05.570-1 regarding multifamily parking standards. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards. The planning and zoning commission recommended approval of the application at their regular meeting held May 11, 2022. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Crystal Chanda, A&amp;E Engineering. I am here to ask for a text amendment for city code 17.05.570, which are parking standards by land use. Currently, the code requires residential multifamily dwelling units to provide two off-street parking spaces per unit. This is the same requirement for studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and up. So currently, if you have a fourplex with four one-bedroom units, you're required to have eight off-street parking spaces. If you have an apartment with five studio apartments, you're required to have 10 off-street parking spaces. You could imagine that most of the time, these parking spaces don't get used. Also consider all the affordable housing apartments that are being built. Currently, an apartment with two bedrooms would require two parking spaces, and many of these, these are low-income families that only have one car, and the second space is not used. Last, we could, could consider apartment complexes for retired community, similar to Cottonwood Cove. They're required to provide two parking spaces per unit. Cottonwood Cove has 82 units of all sizes. I spoke with the complex manager, and he estimates that only 50% of their, that at least 50% of their retired tenants don't own vehicles and can no longer drive. They depend on transportation provided by the facility or public transportation. The parking spaces that are required by current code are not being utilized, that are not being utilized could be used for dwelling units or even additional green space. While we are requesting a change to the parking requires, requirements, we understand that ample parking spaces need to be provided for occurrences such as a three-bedroom apartment rented by three college students, and each of them have their own car, or any similar cases. Therefore, we are proposing the following for multi-dwelling units. Studio or one-bedroom apartments only need one unit. Two-bedroom apartments need 1.5 spaces per unit, and three bedrooms or more would need two per unit, which is same as the current code. We feel this number of spaces provides ample off-street parking spaces, given the variety of circumstances that may present each multifamily dwelling unit averaging out the spacing required, if you will. I wanted to provide you with some examples of nearby city requirements. Chubbick requires for three dwellings or less, whether they're attached or not, two, two per unit. Three dwellings or more attached or not, 1.75 per unit, and a multifamily studio unit's only one. Blackfoot Code states that you must provide ample off-street parking, but the director, I like that, but the director stated that it's usually two per unit, but they do entertain variances. Idaho Falls, a single unit is two spaces. A multi-unit is one per bedroom, but not less than two. And housing for a person over 62, though, is only one per unit. Caldwell, I did this one because we're a little similar in population. A single family or two, two family homes are two per dwelling unit, and three family homes are 1.5 per dwelling unit. I was, would also like to mention that the current parking standards have prevented many developers from moving forward with their housing, which is so badly needed, because the current number of parking spaces requires, are unfeasible for many of the projects. The required parking has been reviewed by the city's planning and development staff, and as you know, approved by the planning and zoning commission. And we would ask that this council approve this text amendment tonight.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes. Crystal, is this a permanent change for everyone, not just for Dakota's project?
Correct.
I think it's a great idea.
Questions?
I'm a little concerned, being well over 62, and, and could envision myself living in an active retirement community, and perhaps with a spouse or partner also significantly over 62, but equally capable of continuing to drive. I'm a little concerned about the, the ageism.
Understood. I will remind you that the 62 was taken from an example from Idaho Falls, whereas what I'm proposing would still be 1.5. So it would average out if you and a spouse had two cars and one bedroom, and somebody else had none. So it kind of averages out. You know what I mean?
If that turned out to be true. I mean, because it, you know, I, I guess I'm concerned about the catch-all phrase, retirement community, because there's a huge range of retirement communities, not necessarily currently in this town.
I'm not asking for any specifics on a retirement community. So if it's a, if it's a four-unit place for retirement, or a four-unit place for a young couple, they'll require the same amount of parking. I was just giving you an example from another city.
Okay. But I thought you said that in a retirement community, it would average out, because there would be.
I just said in general, it will average out. That's why we didn't say one or two. We said 1.5 for that middle space, so it kind of makes the difference. I'm not a statistician. I didn't go through all the possible things.
I understand, but I guess having, having, being quite familiar with a variety of retirement commu, housing situations that are termed retirement communities.
Yeah, they would be the same for multifamily units according to what we're asking for.
Regardless of age.
Any other questions? Okay, Jim, could we?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jim Anglesey, long-range planner for the city. Before you, is a zoning ordinance text amendment application from Dakota Worrell requesting to amend table 175570-1 of the zoning ordinance regarding multifamily parking standards, as you've already heard from Crystal. It is often the case that multifamily developments built to the current standard of two off-street parking stalls per unit exceeds the demand of parking for that development. Thus, our current parking standards for multifamily development often discourage the highest and best use of land in our city, requiring that land be used for an overabundance of parking accommodations. Notification for this public hearing was published in accordance with state and city noticing requirements. No written comments from the public have been received by staff regarding this application. And in consideration of the application, the planning and zoning commission has recommended approval of the zoning ordinance amendment, and staff concludes that the application is compliant with the review criteria as listed in city code section 172170. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions for Jim?
So, so staff's recommendation is that, that the change in requirements for off-street parking is a good thing?
Yes. At a future date, we, we look at, we'll look at reforming all of our parking standards. We, we believe that they are at a date and they need to be reviewed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Jim, real quick, have you had any other correspondence that the council has not seen?
No.
Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application? Crystal, I know you like to talk, but I'm not going to let you talk anymore. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel decides as before you had a wish to proceed. Counselwoman Lurick?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this zoning ordinance text amendment as outlined in agenda number seven.
Second.
That's all.
Okay, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the rule?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Gotta find the right. Okay, here we go. Different public, different kind of public hearing next. All right, agenda item eight, public hearing reconsideration request for a variance at 950 North 10th Avenue. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Pat Rowley regarding the decision of a, on a variance application. The hearing examiner approved the application with modifications requiring the following. One, a 15-foot front setback. Two, five-foot corner street side setback. Three, 20-foot garage setback. And four, off-street parking to be assessed from the adjacent alley. That I declare the public hearing opened. Counsel, has there been any expertise contacts? Okay.
Good to go.
Pat, you're good to go. Here, if you'd give that to me, and I'll pass in both ways. That way you can get going.
These pictures of some homes. The top picture is my current lot that I'm trying to develop. The other pictures are pictures of corner lots that have been developed already in the area, and they're, they're just across the street from me and one block down. So three blocks has been approved for a variance to have things done to their lot, and, and I was denied from the planning and zoning commission. Well, I wasn't really denied, but they wanted me to build it with some modifications that, that, that I, I guess I can't, I made a lot of modifications, but I can't build a 15-foot wide home, you know? And that's what it said. They're saying I can build a 20-foot wide home now, is what they've said. And I actually need the home to be 24 feet wide. In here, when I was reading the conclusion on here, there's a couple errors in here. Did everybody in the council read this by chance? Okay, there are some errors in here. One of them being that, that there's plenty of off-street parking at this property, and currently there is zero off-street parking. curb and gutter is in there that, that keeps you from pulling into the lawn or whatever. But the lawn would be the only place to park, is the lawn that's currently there, which I hope to build a home on. But, but, so there is currently. But so there is currently no off-street parking there. I have to park on the roadway, which a couple weeks ago, I mean, I had to park a block away from my home, because there were other people parked right around that home, that area. And why they were parking there when they could see construction was going on is beyond me, but that's okay, they did, and I wasn't able to park in front of my own home. There is a little 400-square-foot cottage on that home that my brother lives in right now. He's disabled. And I've been in my RV for two years, so I'm homeless, okay? And I'm actually hoping to build my home on that lot in front of my brother's little cottage there, so I can take care of my brother. And to do that, I want to build this home so it's ADA accessible, which requires me to build it at 24 feet wide. The city wants me to build it at 20-foot wide, which would take away all ADA requirements for me to be able to maneuver around inside the home in a wheelchair without encumbrances. And to build anything less than the 24-foot wide home there would also create some functional obsolescence. In other words, the garage portion of it that I want to build, it needed to be 24 feet wide also, so that I could get my truck in there. If I built what the city wanted me to build, which was 20-foot wide, I wouldn't be able to park my truck in there. My truck's 21 foot long, and a 24-foot-deep garage would allow me to park my truck in there, you know, out of the sight of any traffic. And I'm on the very end of this residential area, right in the commercial area. If you see the pictures there, I've got Oak Street Auto behind me, I've got Brian's Tire across the street in Oak Street, and then I got a tattoo shop and a piercing shop right across the street from me. I got Sean's Barbecue Kitty Corner from me. Those homes that you're looking at, they've been allowed to... And I wanted to do this without bringing anybody up, I wanted to do it on its own merits and standards, but I have to give something to compare it to. Thus, the pictures, okay? The pictures are there for us to show you what one of those corner lots looks like after it's been redone, which is what I want to do with my lot. But to build, you know, I've recently had some health challenges, I don't know if I'll be walking long. I've got some equilibrium challenges now, so I may end up in a wheelchair, and I need my home to be, you know, wheelchair or ADA accessible, I just do. And I'm here over a four-foot variance that I've asked for on the home. I want to build it at 24 foot wide, not 20 foot wide. If you look at the one that's under construction, that is my lot, looks like crap in them pictures, of course. And that, the thing that's wrong in here is they say that my home currently does not meet the setback requirements, the little 400-square-foot cottage that's sitting there. And it does, it does meet current standards. It's 17 feet off the side yard, it's 34 feet off the front, and 34 feet off the back, and the required five feet off of the inside. So it does currently meet setback standards, the little cottage that's there, and this says that it does not, but it does. Unless they're in reference to that outbuilding that you see in the picture in the back of the one that's under construction, there's an outbuilding in the back there that is sitting right on the city right-of-way, okay? It's sitting right on my property line and the city's property line. And if that's what they're in reference to, is that building in the back that's sitting right on the property... Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking about this picture, sir?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I'm visual, so use your finger and point.
I'm glad you put this... This little building right in the back. There we go. This building right in back, right back here.
Okay.
It's sitting right on the property line, so it's about, it's on the property line. And the current house is, well, five feet off of the property line. So the assessment here was wrong, that it doesn't meet current standards, because right now it does, unless it's that building in the back that's causing them to say that. And then the other big challenge I have is, as you can see by those pictures, those people have been allowed to enter their garage from the street side instead of from the alley. And because I'm on a corner lot, I'm asking that I can be allowed to enter my garage from the street side opposed to the alley, and not just because I want to pull in from the street side. It does make sense, because it provides less traffic challenges and stuff if I do, because I can just pull in and pull out. The city engineer said that, you know, I could pull in from the alleyway, which is currently required, you know, it's required for me to pull in from the alley. However, I've got two power poles there from Idaho Power in the back of my lot, and it's going to be... And I asked Idaho Power, I did everything I could to comply with the setback standards, and Idaho Power wants anywhere from $6,000 to $10,000 to remove those poles, which is another burden to me that I can't handle at this time. So I have to be able to enter from the street side, as the other individuals have been allowed to do in those pictures, as you can see. And it really makes it nice, if you look at what's been done, I mean, those are nice-looking, you know, where the garages has been put in. So that's where I'm at, you know, I'm just asking for four feet. If I build my house out four feet, this building that's out, that's currently not met setback standards, the building in back, I'm tearing that down. I'm tearing that one down. It's being tore down right now. So it'll come off of the property line, and the garage that I want to put up will be one foot back inside of that one, even. So I'm bringing the buildings that I want to put up in another foot, instead of out where it's currently at. So I have done everything, you know, that's been required that I could think of to get this approved, so I can build a house there and have a place to live. I'm talking being able to enter my garage from the street side, and I'm talking about being able to build my house out to 24 foot instead of 20 foot. So I'm asking for... The front, I really don't need an easement. The inside, I don't need a variance, or a variance on the front. Or the back, I would need a variance for the back because of the garage, I wanted to put a double-car garage on there. But I can, if they want a 20-foot setback, you know, when I got an alley there, if that's what they really want, I could make a single-car garage instead of a double-car garage, and I don't have a challenge with that. So, and that would give us a setback of about, well, 25 feet from the back, if I made a single-car garage. But that's what I'm looking for, is just see if the council will have grace and allow a four-foot variance on this bill for me. And just to reiterate what the goals are, the land use goal for the area, and for the City of Pocatello's comprehensive plan, is to develop and implement zoning designations and regulations that promote land uses and developments, and complement the surrounding vernacular while utilizing the unique context and opportunities of each designated area. To develop zoning districts and regulations that focus on relationships between developments...
Thank you, the time is up.
Oh. Can I read one last sentence?
Finish the sentence really quick, I don't usually do that. Finish quick.
Okay, well, the last sentence is, "to encourage development that is attractive and compatible, and improve the quality of its surrounding environment, including established neighborhoods, and allow flexible setbacks to enable infill and redevelopment to occur."
Thank you. Questions for Pat?
I have a question.
Okay, we've got questions, we've got Rick, and then Claudia.
Pat, how long have you owned this lot?
I've owned this lot for probably close to 20 years.
Okay. How long has your brother lived in the cottage?
15 years, at least.
Okay.
And it's a one-level home, you know, which is what I'm going to do with this home, is I'm going to make it so it don't have steps to it, no wheelchairs.
Okay, Claudia?
So your garage, you're going to pull in from what street?
I want to pull in from Custer, the street that you see there, yeah, from Custer. I want to pull in from the street side instead of pulling up into the alley and then coming in.
Okay.
One more. Other questions?
Rick? Is the problem here the solar panel installation?
That's one of the issues, is I am making it a solar home, so that, you know, I can afford the electricity, and they do require a certain amount, you know, of roof space for the solar panels to be put in. And that is one thing that I was looking for, was mainly my roof space, so I could put the solar panels in.
Any other questions? Chris?
So currently, there are how many buildings on this property?
Just one.
One.
Oh, well, no, currently there's three buildings on that property, but I'm tearing two of them down. And one of the two that I'm tearing down is the one that's sitting right on the property line, so I will eliminate that.
So how many buildings are when, I mean...
Two.
When you're said and done?
When I'm said and done, it's going to be two buildings. And I have a picture of that, I don't know if you've seen that or not, but this is the way it looks.
Does the cottage unit come down then, too?
No. I'm attaching the garage to the cottage, and then I'm building my home in front.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, but the garage will actually be attached to the cottage. So it will be, it will be two buildings.
Right.
A garage with a little tiny cottage, and then the house in front.
Pat, we do have a picture of it.
Oh, okay. My drawings, yeah. My drawings right there. I know it looks like, on that one drawing, it looks like it's separate, but it's not, it will be attached.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Pat. Staff?
Thank you, counsel. Mayor, black.
Mr. Mayor and council, Jim Anglesey, long-range planner. Before you is reconsideration request, application from Pat Rowley regarding the decision on his variance application from the hearing examiner. Mr. Rowley's request was for a variance from Code Section 174220, which requires the following: A 15-foot front setback; A 10-foot corner street-side setback; A 20-foot garage setback; And that off-street parking be accessed from the alley. Mr. Rowley is proposing a new primary dwelling unit and garage with a front setback of 14 feet; A corner street-side setback of one foot; A garage setback of one foot facing the intersection of Custer and Oak. The hearing examiner approved Mr. Rowley's request with the modifications of 15-foot front setback; A 5-foot corner street-side setback; A 20-foot garage setback; And that off-street parking be accessed from the alley. Notification for this public hearing was published in accordance with state and city noticing requirements, and no written comments from the public have been received by staff regarding the application. And in consideration of the application, the hearing examiner approved the variance with modifications as described, and staff concluded during that previous hearing that the variance application was not compliant with the review criteria as listed in 172160. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I got Josh?
Possibly for you, Jim. I know that in the pre-agenda meeting, it was discussed that one of the big concerns was the safety of the garage and the street access. Putting the garage aside, the setbacks specifically for the home, as outlined, of the 14 feet from the front, and corner side-street setback of one foot, what are, if any, detrimental consequences that we see that could affect the public of just those setbacks, not including the garage in the back?
Setbacks are put in place usually for two reasons. One, for the safety of individuals. It could be car going off the road, or things like that, as well as continuity within the neighborhood. Those are the two reasons why setbacks are mainly used. And so those concerns would still exist in this case as well.
Thank you.
Linda, and then Chris.
In our pre-meeting, you answered some questions about other options, that there are ways that Mr. Rowley could meet the requirements if he did things a little bit differently. Could you address that issue?
Without going in detail, because I'm not an architect, but there have been other examples in this neighborhood that have been able to design a 20-foot wide home. And I would believe with a little bit of design, that you could accommodate ADA accessibility within a 20-foot wide home.
What about the truck that he mentioned, and the need to be able to fit that? Is that something that you feel could be accommodated within these requirements?
It could be accommodated, if his request is granted, could be accommodated off the alleyway. Or we don't have any, anything saying that he could just pour a pad, not a garage, because the setback is for a garage, a structure. Absent that, he could pour a pad and park on that.
Okay, Chris?
Yeah, are the setbacks in this neighborhood consistent?
No. And that's one thing that you will want to consider, driving around those neighborhoods, there's a lot of grandfathered homes that are pretty close to the sidewalk and street that could be, could take that into account. And we, as planning staff, have attempted to modify our setback requirements in the OTO to provide more of an average than a hard, hard-set number on setbacks.
And have we had recent situations where cars drove off the road into yards in that neighborhood where apparently there's inconsistent...
No.
...setback?
No.
So that's not, that's not something that we experience...
Not regularly.
On a, at a high rate.
Right.
You said "not regularly," what does that mean?
It happens.
Every three weeks, we're driving off the road and running into somebody's house.
I have a question.
Yes, Claudia?
So, so, as long as, if he just had, I just want to make sure I understood what you said, that if he just lays a concrete pad, and it doesn't have walls or a roof, he can put it where he wants it, right? But the only reason why he can't in this situation is because it's going to have walls and a roof?
The current requirement is still to access it off the alleyway, but the setback, we govern based off of whether it's a structure or not. And so if you have a garage, we currently, if it's off the street, we require 20 feet. If it's off the alley, 10 feet.
So can I, and this is going to be a stupid question for you, but what, what's the difference in whether there's a structure or not? The footprint is the footprint.
It would be sight. And so if it's enclosed, you're not, as you're driving down the road, you're not able to see a car until it comes out of the garage. If it's on a pad, you're able to see. So line of sight.
I told you it was a stupid question. All right, thank you, Jim.
What's the traffic like on Custer? My impression is it's not a very busy street, but I could be wrong.
I can answer that question, no problem. You know that.
There's very little traffic there.
Compared to other streets around, it's less.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jim, all is up? Okay, then, Jim, before you leave, have we received any correspondence the council has not seen?
No.
Madam Clerk, have we received any in the clerk's office? Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, Pat?
Yes.
There have been some questions asked that you may want to answer, there's something else you might want to say, so I'll give you an opportunity as a rebuttal, if you wanted to step up here. Nope, 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 come on up. to step up here. Nope, 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 come on up.
I did revise the drawing, and I cut four feet off of each corner, of the front corner, so that they could have their visual, the view of 80 feet from the corner. So I have made the corner of the house 45, you know, for that view purpose. And I did that. I also, I'm gonna make the elevation ground level so that there's not gonna be any required steps into the home, because that was one thing they didn't want me to do, is they didn't want me to use that one foot that I got, that one extra foot that I got. They didn't want me to build a porch on it. So, well, that's easily remedied, and so I'm just making it ground level. There won't be no front porch or steps. I'll have it at ground level. As far as safety concerns and, and as far as the neighborhood goes, the neighborhood's looking forward to the home being done. That I know. And they don't care whether it's 20-foot wide or 24-foot wide. But, but I did cut that corner off for the view.
Okay, any other questions for him while he's up, real quick? Okay, thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
This is before you. Okay, I've got Josh and then Claudia.
From what I see, I think that, number one, as Jim mentioned, there is a lot of variation in that area. I've been in that area. I know that there's that variation that exists, and I think that this is a particular lot. This is something that was discussed in pre-agenda meeting about the size. It is narrow. It is in a weird corner, on a weird kind of cross-section. And so I think, for me, the home is something that I see is really important. I also know, though, that driving in that area is a bit of a nightmare, and especially that corner with the intersecting roads, and that garage does worry me. So I want to ask a clarification question. Can our motion be to approve the setback of 14 feet in the front, the corner side-street setback of 1 foot, and uphold the hearing assessors 20-foot setback of the garage and off-street parking to be accessed from the adjacent alley?
So you're asking if it can be 14, not 15?
Well, so his initial request was 14 feet in the front, 1 foot on the side. Can we approve those two parts and uphold the other two parts of number three and four?
As I understand it, the council can do whatever they'd like to on that. But before any kind of emotion...
Right, now, before any motion, I just wanted to know if that's what I would personally like.
Well, actually, I was gonna make a motion.
Okay, we'll make it.
I'm...
We can have a discussion between us. If there's any questions...
I have a question.
For anybody else, then let's hold off on the motion until then. Okay, question?
So what would the proposal by Councilman Mansfield, what would the impact on you be?
The impact would be, I would make a single car, as long as I was able to come to that, if that one foot was approved, I could still build a garage, and I could still have a 20-foot setback from the alley if it was a single-car garage. And like I said, I don't have a problem building a single-car garage. I'm gonna, I'm retired now, and this is my retirement home, you know, so I'm gonna be spending a lot of time there.
So I think I understood that, Councilman, that you would be proposing to uphold the entrance to the garage from the alley?
Correct, and the 20-foot setback.
Right, right. So that...
That, now, that would hurt me because it's 10 grand to move those power poles, when it's so simple to just pull right in from Custer and just, and traffic-wise, it makes a lot of sense. I mean, it makes common sense, I should say, to just come down Custer and pull into my driveway instead of come down Custer to the stop sign, because the stop sign is right there at the alley. You got the stop sign, the alley, and Custer, and Oak. You got five corners coming together right there at that alleyway. That alleyway would be a disaster if I had to pull in from the alleyway. And I'm surprised that the city engineers didn't pick that, pick up on that.
I'm just wondering if the city engineer could just draw me a picture of the, of these, all these various roadways, because I, I mean, I'm familiar with that area, but I just, I don't care about any of the topographical stuff. I just want to see this, you know, in a schema.
Do you want me to do it on a board?
As opposed to what we have here.
She wants it drawn. She doesn't want the aerial that we have here. She wants you to draw it out.
I just want to see these roads and, because I've driven in that area...
I'll call you back up if we need you.
Never run into a situation where that corner threatened my existence.
Having to enter from that alley would be a disaster. There's five corners coming together there.
So, Merrill, you wanna, are you pulling up the topple? She doesn't want to see it from there. She wants you to draw it up.
I'm gonna show her the areas. I had it there. I have it back.
Okay, are there any other questions while Merrill's doing that? Are there any other questions for Pat or anyone? See, I would entertain your emotion.
I want to make a motion. I want to make a motion that we, because infill is important, and this is a funky-looking lot, that's gonna be very difficult to do anything attractive on, other than what this gentleman is already planning on doing. So I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the variance the way it's, the way it's, the way he wants it, the way it's proposed, so that he can build his home, he can take care of his brother, and, and then it's, and that corner won't look so blighted, and it'll just be a nice addition to the neighborhood. And considering that there's so many other variances in that area, it's very difficult to say, we've got to stick with this when clearly we have not stuck with that. So, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Ortega and a second by Stevens. Counsel, do you have any discussion on this?
I would just like to make the comment that I worry, I agree, and like I mentioned in my first comment, about the house, I really feel like the infill house is something that I really support, especially, I mean, I worry about a garage that's obstructed sightlines with that, you know, in approving that kind of variation where a truck is right next to the road and just pulls right out of that garage, no sightlines. That worries me as a safety concern, especially when that's something that...
There's 13 feet from, there's 13 feet.
No, we're not, sorry, sorry.
Especially when staff has indicated that they consider that a safety concern. So I personally will be voting no on that motion for those reasons.
Did I see your hand, Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I don't disagree with you, and I certainly don't disagree with the potential, but I guess my problem is, this isn't a gentleman who recently purchased this lot and, and, you know, didn't do his homework. You know, this, this is not a particularly affluent portion of town. This, this is part of our very old housing stock situation that we're trying to upgrade. And, and I think we're going to be faced with these kinds of situations, and I don't know that we can hold hard and fast to what we would like when we have people clearly in situations where, you know, they're operating within a highly varied neighborhood, where I'm sure there are other, you know, potential collision points that are not what we would like to have. So I, I feel that we, you know, me personally, I feel that we, we need to be willing, be willing to be flexible, knowing, understanding that this is not an ideal situation from anybody's perspective.
Okay, any other comments? All right, so we have a motion by Ortega and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Chita?
Reluctantly, yes.
Flora? I'm also a reluctant yes. I think this is not ideal, but I think there are reasons to grant this.
Mansfield?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to Agenda Item 9. It is a public hearing zoning and comprehensive plan map amendment for property near Gold Star Drive. This time has been set aside for the council to hear comments from the public regarding a request by Ken Poppy, represented by Chris Adams of Creek Hollow and Associates Incorporated, for a zoning and comprehensive plan map amendment application. The request calls for rezoning two parcels from residential, commercial, professional, RCP, to commercial, general, CG. The request also calls to amend the comprehensive plan land use map from mixed use MU to commercial, C. The property is located north of Gold Star Drive and another parcel south of Gold Star Drive and west of Olympus Drive, totaling 10.5 acres, more or less. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request at their May 11, 2022 regular meeting. I declare the public hearing open. I'm looking for, is Chris here? Ken, is it you? That's right, his high school graduation. Here, it's you.
Ken Poppy, 1754 Cottage. It was commercial. We're taking a section back to commercial from RCP, 10 acres.
We've got a question, but before you ask the question, I forgot to do this. Is there any ex parte communication, counsel? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Ken, how will this affect the way you can develop this property?
Well, we're getting a lot on commercial, more, well, I can't, I can't think of everybody's minds what they want. That's our biggest problem.
So let's just broaden that, then?
Yes. Because, you know, going back and forth, changing so many times, that's ridiculous. I spend way too much. So, you know, I get a lot of calls, but I can't think what everybody needs. But I'd put a walk-through path behind the commercial, divide that from residential on that. If you can see on your map there, you see what I'm trying to do there. Instead of having houses right across and all that, right on the main road, people backing out on the main road, you can't have that, so.
Chris?
Yeah, I mean, I realize that the original plan for North Gate is no more. I mean, it was gonna be all the, you know, it was highly planned and et cetera, et cetera, when it was presented, and I understand that that's gone. But I, I'm wondering, because we already do have commercial, I mean, we have residential up there. I mean, there are all those apartments.
We always had that residential.
Right, and, and, you know, theoretically, you know, we, me personally, I would like to see apartments built that are attractive and that where people want to live and they don't want to live right across from a business, because it seems as though we're defeating ourselves. So how does this impact the homes that are up there, the current lots that are owned perhaps by other developers that are residential up there? I mean, you know, I have no idea what's going on up there anymore. It just seems kind of like a free-for-all, and that's, that's, you know, I understand that that's a non-professional perspective, but, but I'm concerned that we're, we're gonna build, create a zoning situation where I wouldn't want to live, for example, and then people are gonna own, own lots on which they want to build expensive homes, and they're in the middle of an area where nobody...
Good, good example. Right across the ravine, they're got, we got $2 million houses there. They, they know what's across the ravine. They know there's grocery store. They know I got businesses going up there. You know, a lot of cities have that. You mix them, look at Ron Pocatello, he got businesses like this gentleman right down the street. But when I saw lots of that, people know, but I can't project...
No.
What people need to build in there. You know, you spend so much money changing all the time. I can't keep doing that.
No, I, no, I understand. I mean, as I say, you know, originally, there was a plan, and now it's in 24-hour flux, pretty much, it seems. But I'm just concerned that we're gonna be building an area where, you know, where we're actually impeding residential development, which we need. That's, that's my concern. Or we're causing people to build, you know, kind of unattractive because they're building to suit the neighborhood, and why would they build, you know, a high-end condominium complex across from a tire store?
Let me give you a bigger water, a bigger look at the situation.
Great, thank you.
The cost of developing house lots, more than tripled. I mean, to build a house lot now, a lot of these developers are gonna find out what it's cost. Over, some of my products went up over 5 to 1,000 percent. I mean, when I started, even my water line, I can't even get pipe. I can't get valves. And the city can tell you that. The pipe, when I first went up there, it was $8.49 foot. I'm paying over 3, $53 a foot for 12-inch water line. Now, developers put in house lots, it's gonna be the thing of the past. You're gonna see more condos, townhouses than anything. And that's what we're looking at. We gotta have affordable houses. We need housing here. But in order to get housing, people need places to go eat, restaurants, things to do. And that's what I'm trying to do.
Right. Well, people do live in subdivisions where there aren't a lot of grocery stores and, but anyway, that's, that's, I'm just concerned that we're working at cross purposes, but I'm gonna wait to hear from staff, because I'm, I'm gonna have to trust planning staff on this. But thank you, Ken, I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Ken while he's up? Thanks, Ken. Staff? Jim's getting his steps tonight.
It's me again. Before you, a zone map and comprehensive plan map application to rezone property located note, north of Gold Star Drive and another property south of Gold Star Drive from RCP to commercial, general. The request also calls to amend the comprehensive plan map from mixed use to commercial. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the application, and notification of this public hearing was published in accordance with state and city noticing requirements. No written comments from the public have been received by staff, and in consideration of the application, staff concludes that the proposed zone map and comprehensive plan amendment is compliant with the review criteria as listed in city code. Should the council approve the application, staff recommends conditions as listed in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Jim?
So you believe that granting this change is in fact going to improve the quality development of that area in a way that benefits the entire community, the entire community?
It provides a mix of uses, and where we are limited in our, in our commercial space in town, I believe that that would be a benefit.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, Jim. He mentioned that he had not received any written correspondence. Madam Clerk, have we received any in the clerk's office?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Then with that, we'd look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Okay, Ken, do you want any, you want to say some more? You got an opportunity, okay. You and Pat are different people. Pat wanted to talk some more. With that, I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item, before you had your wish to proceed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 19.
Nine.
Nine, sorry, nine. Wishful thinking there.
That's right.
Nine as written, and I'm not seeing any legal and necessary...
Subject to conditions.
Subject to conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Chita. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Chita?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Is the motion to approve?
Approve.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then, counsel, we've been at it for two hours. Should we take a quick break?
I, could I suggest that since Mr. Seabird... Could I suggest that since Mr. Seibert was somewhat held hostage last week, or that we could proceed with his item and then take a break?
Well, I would do that, but he's being held hostage anyway after agenda item 11, and so let's go ahead and take a break real quick. Let's make it as close to five minutes as possible, and then we'll go from there. Thank you. So, thank you for joining us after the break. We will go ahead and continue on with agenda item number 10, is a Creekside District Short Plat Expiration Deadline Extension Request, Michael Seibert. Counsel may wish to approve a request by Michael Seibert to extend the two-year expiration deadline for the short plat. The application, the applicant is, is unavailable to complete the project in a timely manner due to material and labor shortages associated with the COVID pandemic. Counsel may also wish, may also ask to define a time period associated with the extension. Staff has recommended a 12-month extension period.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Roger first.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the short plat expiration deadline by the recommended period of 12 months.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Mansfield.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask Mr. Seibert a question?
Sure.
Mike, could you come up?
Wasn't paying attention.
Neither were half of us.
Michael Seibert, Iron Eagle.
Will the 12-month extension allow you to do what you need to do, Mike?
We think it will. Right now, the power company's having trouble getting transformers. We'll get, if you approve this, we'll do, start material order tomorrow, and we'll get most of the infrastructure and the road and everything in. We just don't know where the joint trench is coming in. And we don't, if it goes like the rest of them, the joint trench isn't going to make it this year, it'll be in the spring. And who knows what's happening to the transformers and the equipment, so.
Mr. Mayor, would Mr. Seibert be eligible for a second extension if this 12-month doesn't work?
I believe, as I've talked with staff, if we see the project moving forward with substantial evidence that it's moving forward, and they're probably not going to hold the project up for Idaho Power unable to get a transformer, though we've got my, the, we've got the planning director on his way up here right now, so, let's ask him.
Could you do a second extension? The code actually doesn't allow for an extension for a final plat, so this is an exception to the code. You could potentially do that. There is built in, though, a bond option where if it was a situation with transformers not being available, he could bond for those and proceed with finalizing that plat. I did talk with Idaho Power as well, they called me actually to let me know about the transformer shortage. They're anticipating a large shipment in October, but this summer, they're going to probably run out of transformers before the end of the summer.
Wow.
How about making it 18 months?
Well, that's kind of what was in my mind. I'm wondering if we're limiting a developer because of the short timetable for extension because of what's happening with the supply chain.
I have been hearing that the supply chain things are clearing up, and that's part of the economy shifting, and...
I'm not hearing that.
Well, if you look at the differential between what is being asked for and what is starting to accumulate, what's starting to accumulate is going up.
Well, until you start ordering major material items.
Well, but you just had a thing, October, and that's nine, six months away.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, right now, we have a motion by Bray and a second by Mansfield. Is there any other discussion?
So, based on what was just discussed, if, if we did the 12-month, and then the only thing that's inhibiting him after the 12 months is still the transformer, he could do the bond option and continue with the final plat approval until transformers come in, thus, the transformer shouldn't be an issue if we do the 12 months followed by the bond option.
Yes.
I see, shaking head, yes? Okay, all right, that's my only, just want to make sure I have that clear.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Bray, second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, exception to international fire code D 107.1 Lands End. Counsel may wish to approve a request by Brandon Ratliff with Land Quest Development for an exception to the international fire code D 107.1, which requires two approved fire access roads for ingress, egress to or from the subdivision when the development exceeds more than 30 dwelling units. And thank you for standing up here, but you don't get to speak yet.
Not until you hit the hammer?
Well, not, I, well, it's not a public hearing. The thing is, this is not a public hearing, this is only an exception.
So, can I make a motion?
There's not an applicant right now. Well, there's, there's, the, the, this is an exception that the city council will, is considering, it's not a public hearing, and so, right now, there's, unless there's a question, then, then we'll go from there, but it sounds like, I just heard I have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
I have questions before the motion. Because don't the questions need to come before the motion?
I don't care, go ahead, Josh.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just have a question for the applicant.
Okay.
I, I, sorry.
No, it's fine, I don't care, it doesn't matter.
I just wanted to make sure that we...
Yep.
Got the questions in.
You do you.
I know that one of the alternative options for the, in order to bring the project into compliance, is a fire sprinkler system. What is the cost of a fire sprinkler system estimated at for each home?
I'd have to defer that to the owner or the developer with the engineering firm. Do you have an idea of what it costs?
Brandon Ratliff, Land Quest Development, I've heard in the past, five, six bucks a square foot, but that was, that has been a couple years ago, so it could be more.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, all right. No other questions before a motion? Claudia?
I'm going to make a motion that we do not grant the exception to the international fire code after hearing from the fire marshal. I'm not comfortable with that many units and only one in and out, so, I'm, I'm going to make a motion, I mean, you've, you can either sprinkle them or you can reduce the number of, of units, but I think we need to stick with the code. The code's there for public safety, and trying to get everybody off there in the event of a fire is, is, I don't know, scary to me, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ortega and a second by Cheatham, and if I understand the motion, it is to deny the exception to international fire code.
That is my motion.
Wendy, would you please call the roll?
I, it...
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry.
Just a short comment. I mean, I, I think, for example, that there's a difference when we're talking about new construction versus the last issue that we had to consider. Here, we have options to follow best practice and protect lives, and, and I think we're, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that.
Okay. We have a motion by Ortega, a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda item, we'll move to agenda item 12, the short plat application Creekside District Division Two subdivision. Counsel may wish to approve a short plat application submitted by Michael Seibert of Iron Eagle LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to subdivide 2.31 acres, more or less, into two lots. The proposed subdivision is located at 1625 Pocatello Creek Road. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of agenda item number 12, the short plat application by Creekside District Division Two, in accordance with the applicable standards and conditions as proposed by staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, short plat application Rice subdivision. Counsel may wish to approve a short plat application submitted by Randy Smith, represented by Carton Payne of Global Land Works, to subdivide 4.33 acres, more or less, into three lots. The proposed subdivision is located at 2396 South Grant Avenue. Staff finds the proposal compliant with all applicable standards with conditions. Counsel, I'm Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I move that we approve this short plat application, subject to all applicable standards and conditions.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, final plat application High Terrace Division Three. Counsel may wish to approve a final plat application submitted by Bill Eisley, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, to subdivide 18.69 acres, more or less, into 32 lots. The proposed subdivision is located along the future extension of East Center Street and north of Vista Drive. Staff finds the proposal compliant with the applicable standards with conditions. Counselwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve the final plat application for High Terrace Division Three as outlined in number 14.
Second.
Have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens.
Could we talk with Mr. Eisley for just a moment?
Why don't you ask that before the motion?
Well, we didn't let that other guy talk.
We didn't, we didn't, so...
All right.
Let's just, let's vote on it. Sorry, Bill.
Be fair to everybody.
All you can do is change the motion.
With that, then, Wendy, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lawrence?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, did you want to ask Bill a question?
Not now.
All right, thank you. No, we're, we're good, you're, you're good to go.
You made a really big mistake on that fire thing. I was going to talk about that for a second.
Okay.
You can't.
We'll move to agenda item 15, exception request to allow overnight camping Coors Light Phil, Coors Light softball tournament. Counsel may wish to consider approving the following request from the annual Coors Light Adult Softball Tournament, represented by Pat...
Zoush.
Zoush?
Zoush.
Zoush, in regards to their annual adult softball tournament. A, allow an exception to city code 12.36.020, restricted hours in parks, to allow for overnight camping at NLP Park's Watkins softball complex on June 3 and 4, 2022. To host the annual Coors Light Adult Softball Tournament. And B, allow, allow approval of associated exceptions to city ordinance 12.36.020 for future years, subject to Parks and Recreation Director's review and barring any significant changes or change, change or changes to the event. If the exception is granted to the tournament, will be required to submit the appropriate application, provide proof of liability insurance, and pay applicable permit fees. Parks and Recreation staff recommends approval of the exception request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we accept agenda, approve agenda item number 15 as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes, sorry.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 16, airport grant application and professional services agreement airport. Counsel may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following. A, all pertinent documents related to a grant application to the FAA in the amount of $277,496. The required 6.25% match in the amount of $18,533. Will be funded using previously budgeted airport passenger facility charge PFC funds. The projects to be funded using the grant funds will be preliminary, will be preliminary design for the rehabilitation of Runways 321. Completion of pavement management plan and an independent fee estimated, estimate, and if approved, B, authorize the professional services agreement with TO engineers for preliminary design of, of the rehabilitation of runway 321 and completion of the pavement management plan. Cost for the project is $291,996.33. Yes. Go ahead. I've, I've got both of you doing it, so I don't really care who does it, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number 16 as outlined before us.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, leading Idaho local bridge program grant application. Counsel may wish to approve submission of a grant application for the children pedestrian safety program in the amount of $250,000, subject to legal department review. If awarded, counsel may wish to authorize acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. Grant funds will be used for a pedestrian improvement project at the intersections of Hawthorne Road and Jensen Street. There is no city match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve agenda item number 17 as written.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Bray. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 18, leading Idaho local bridge program LILB for Benton Street Bridge over the Portnoy River. A, approve submission of the grant application for the leading Idaho local bridge program LILB for Benton Street Bridge over the Portnoy River in the amount of $2,200,000, subject to legal department review. There is no city match. B, if approved, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents related to the grant, subject to legal department review. C, adopt a leading local bridge program city of Pocatello resolution, and D, approve a memorandum of understanding, leading Idaho local bridge program between local highway technical assistance council and the city of Pocatello.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve agenda item number 18, parts A, B, C, and D as written.
Second.
Is that with legal department review?
Yeah.
That's included in B.
Okay. So we have a motion by Stevens and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 19, South Fifth Avenue Safety Improvement Project Agreement Resolution, Idaho Transportation Department. Counsel may wish to approve by resolution a state and local agreement between Idaho Transportation Department and the city of Pocatello, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review. Counsel may also wish to authorize the use of funds in the amount of $65,689, the required[1706.63] LLHSIP, grant for the South Fifth Avenue Safety Improvement Project in 2019. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the South Fifth Avenue Safety Improvement Project, that we authorize you to sign all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Have a motion by Bray and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 20, Maine and Arthur Pedestrian Improvement Project Agreement, Idaho Transportation Department. Council may wish to approve a state and local agreement between Idaho Transportation Department and the City of Pocatello, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review. Council may also wish to authorize the use of funds in the amount of $3,000, a portion of the required match for the project. Funds are available in Fund 70. Funds for the project were previously awarded by the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council, LHTAC, grant for the Maine and Arthur Pedestrian Improvement Projects in 2020. Councilman Cheatham, Council President Cheatham, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the Maine and Arthur Pedestrian Improvement Project Agreement with the Idaho Transportation Department, authorizing your signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review, as authorized in agenda item number 20.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 21, Idaho Power Utility Easement, Pocatello Regional Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign an Idaho Power Utility Easement at Pocatello Airport, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve agenda item number 21 as written, including, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Stevens?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 22, Bid Acceptance and Contract for Well Number 2R Test Well, Water Department. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for the well number 2R Test Well Project to High Plains Drilling Incorporated in the amount of $59,508, and authorize the mayor to execute, to execute all contract documents, subject to legal department review. Funding is available through the funds received with the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Lurick.
I move that we approve the bid acceptance and contract for well number 2R Test Well for the Water Department, and authorize the mayor to execute, execute all contract documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 23, Lease Agreement Resolution Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the following lease agreements and resolutions for property at the Pocatello Airport. A, Richard Carroll and Michael McCormick, a lease, a lease for approximately 8,500 square feet of land upon which Mr. Carroll and Mr. McCormick co-own an aircraft hangar. The proposed term is 10 years with a proposed rent, annual rental rate of $1,683. And B, ITC services, a lease for approximately 7,750 square feet of warehouse space and 15,000 square feet of outdoor storage yard, for the purpose of operating a hay bale tarping business. The proposed term is two years with an automatic two-year renewal and a proposed monthly rental rate of $1,306.26. Both rental rates will be increased annually according to the CPI increase for the previous year, with a full rate review based on appraisal or airport comparisons every five years.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move for approval of the lease agreement resolution for our airport items A and B, the leases of an aircraft hangar to Mr. Carroll and Mr. McCormick, and the leasing to the hay tarping business, subject to, and authorize your signature, subject to legal department view, as outlined in agenda item 23.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 24, Airport Construction Agreement and Notice of Award. Council may wish to approve and authorize the execution of a construction agreement and notice of award between the City of Pocatello and Stocker Parsons Corporation, DBA Idaho Materials and Construction, in the amount of $507,249, for improvements and expansion of, for improvements and expansion of the Bureau of Land Management, BLM, tanker base at the airport, subject to legal department review. The project will be funded by BLM.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of agenda item 24, the Airport Construction Agreement and Notice of Award, authorizing your signature on any contracts necessary, subject to legal department review.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 25, Airport Transportation Agreement Airport. Council may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a transportation agreement with SkyWest Airlines to provide once daily air service between Pocatello and Salt Lake City. If costs exceed revenue, the city will pay a subsidy to SkyWest for the, for the service. The term of the agreement will be 12 months or until the subsidy funds have been exhausted, whichever comes first. The maximum subsidy for the 12-month period is $800,000.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Lurick.
I move that we approve the airport transportation agreement as outlined in agenda item number 25.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Did I hear something?
Question, question?
Yes.
So I want to make sure that I heard correctly what was presented in the, in the clarification meeting. It looks as though quarterly, we are running currently at, at a subsidy rate of approximately 210,000?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council, Allen Evans, Airport Manager. Yes, that number is, is about what that is, from what we understand, and that's about where we figured that would be, as we brought that to you a few months back.
That includes fuel.
And, and that's everything. I mean, that, that's...
That's their cost, that's what the, that's what it is.
That's what they're billing us, so to speak.
Right, right.
Okay, so based on that, then, if, if we experience no increase, but equally experience no decrease, then we should be able to make it through the year, give or take.
That is our hope, that is what we're, we're hoping to do.
And is there anything new on the horizon that gives us any indication that there is light at the end of the tunnel, and we're not, they're not just going to come back to us in a year, wanting us to add up again?
I don't know, it's, it's pretty tough right now. I, I wouldn't say there's anything drastically coming our way that looks really, really positive, but what I can say, I believe that they are doing what they can in the markets that they currently have. I know they recently put an additional flight into Twin Falls for a short period of time. It's going to be removed, as we saw in their schedule, but that makes me think that as their resources are available, they are going to put them where they can do that.
What has me worried is that there were several big articles, I believe last week, about flights being cut across, well, the globe, based on continuing shortage issues. And that doesn't bode well, I mean, that, that didn't encourage me.
And I understand that, and I feel the same way about that. Each day, as I read various headlines, there's a lot of different jockeying that each airline is doing to, to cut flights and to, to maximize their profits. There's obviously everyone, every airline is feeling this pinch with the labor shortage and, and the fuel costs and those sorts of things. So I don't have a crystal ball, I really don't know what's going to happen. I do believe SkyWest being a smaller regional carrier, maybe, you know, hopefully they can make some adjustments quicker than maybe the majors do as well, I'm not sure.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you, Allen. Any other questions while Allen's up here? We like watching him walk back and forth. Okay, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Cheatham. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
I'm still, I still disagree with using taxpayer money to subsidize a for-profit business, so I'm going to say no.
Stevens?
With reservation and some foreboding, I say yes, but not again.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Just a question, I thought that we were using...
So we use...
Other money. We're supplanting.
So what we have is, what is, what is happening, and this has been the plan all along, is the, the money that has been taxed for the, from, for the airport will be used for this, but the, the cares money that the federal government has given us will be, will replace that. We can't use the cares money for that, and so right now, for the next couple of years, as long as we have a flight in, coming into Pocatello, there's a $2 million CARES Act coming in, we're using $800,000 of this, but we can't use CARES Act money, so we have to use the...
So we're trading.
We're trading.
Basically.
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear on how that money was being used.
Yep, okay, thank you. With that, we'll move to agenda item, what is this, 26, is an ordinance, an ordinance vacating and abandoning the public's interest of approximately .323 acres of Apex Road. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, agenda item number 26A, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matt, could you please read the ordinance?
I will. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, abandoning and vacating the public's interest of approximately .323 acres of Apex Road, more particularly described on the attached exhibit A, providing that the public right-of-way herein vacated shall be distributed in its entirety to the adjoining property owner, Thomas J. Katselmedes, in accordance with Idaho Code Section 5311 and Section 501306 parent A, as deemed to be in the best interest of the owner of the vacated property and for the public good, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
39 seconds.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. 26B, an ordinance amending the zoning designation for the property located at 920 Dion Drive from residential medium-density RMS to commercial general CG, with concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan map designation of mixed-use MU to commercial C. Council, how do you wish to have this ordinance read? Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, ordinance, we, I move the ordinance, agenda item number 26B, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matt, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, rezoning property located at 920 Dion Drive, Pocatello, Idaho, from zoning designation residential medium-density, single-family, RMS, to commercial general CG. Said property being more particularly described on the attached exhibit A, providing an amendment to the comprehensive plan map designation from mixed-use MU to commercial C, providing for the repeal of all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 26C, an ordinance vacating and abandoning the public's interest in a stormwater and utility easement, running across the southerlymost portion of lots 5 and 6, Block 4, Cedar Lake subdivision. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Councilman Cheatham? Council President Cheatham, sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, agenda item number 26C, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Mansfield. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Matt, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, abandoning and vacating the public's interest in a stormwater and utility easement located across the southerlymost portion of lots 5 and 6, Block 4, Cedar Lakes, Bannock County, Idaho, and more particularly described on the attached exhibit A, providing that the easement herein vacated shall be distributed in its entirety to the adjoining property owners, Charles Evans and Jennifer Evans, in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 5311 and Sections 501306 parent A, as deemed to be in the best interest of the owner of the vacated property and for the public good, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 26D, an ordinance vacating and abandoning the public's interest in an existing shared access and utility easement, crossing the southeast portion of the southeast one-quarter, southeast one-quarter, south SW1-4SE1, what the heck is this?
For southeast.
Dash four of section 36 Township 6, South Range, 34 East, Boise Meridian, EBM. Council, how do you want this ordinance to be read?
This is the first one I've actually understood. Thank you.
You don't understand that. Councilmember, Council President Cheatham.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance, Agenda Item 26D, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. Wendy, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Matt, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, abandoning and vacating the public's interest in a shared access and utility easement, which crosses the southeast portion of the southwest one-fourth, southeast one-fourth, of section 36 Township 6, South Range 34 East, Boise Meridian, Bannock County, Idaho, and more particularly described on the attached Exhibit A, providing that the easement herein vacated shall be distributed in its entirety to the adjoining property owner, Pocatello Neighborhood Housing Services, LLC, in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50311 and 501306A, as deemed to be in the best interest of the owner of the vacated property and for the public good, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass? Wendy.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
I just want to say I did notice that Jared chose tonight to be gone. I said that too. With four public hearings, so Matt could read them all, apparently. Even though his son was graduating, I think that he should be called out for it. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item 27, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in, you must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes for this and three minutes per speaker. We have one speaker, so Phil Coleman.
Pickleball, pickleball, pickleball.
No.
Throw a curveball.
Mayor Blatt, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Phil Coleman. I live at 2366 Legacy Drive. As you know, I'm here, I'm, tonight I'd like to ask, or I'm trying to get a consensus tonight of the city council members of the state of, district pair of Raymond Park's tennis and pickleball courts. I've spoken to three of the city council members, and tonight I'd like to specifically ask Mr. Bray and Ortega and Stevens, have you had a chance to walk on the courts? I asked a few weeks ago.
You know what I'm going to ask you to hold that question because we're not, I don't want anything...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I don't mean like that. I was able to get, due to the history of the last meeting, that's the old, I got verbiage from others, I'd just like to know if you had a chance to walk on, has all the members of city council had a chance to walk on the tennis and pickleball courts at Raymond Park?
No.
No.
We, I'm going to get, well, I'm going to let them answer it if they would like to after the meeting. We're not going to start a discussion back and forth and start pointing fingers at people here.
All right, well, for my three minutes, I'm here to advocate that this is the new budget for next year. We went through Parks and Rec last year. Parks and Rec board members approved the maintenance and repaving of the tennis and pickleball courts at Raymond Park last year. We did that. Nothing happened with the city council. This year, I'm here, like I spoke to you all earlier, I'm pressing the city council and people that make the budgetary decisions. The courts are a mess.